There, and so if you'll see six placards, I understand that only five gentlemen are here tonight. They are very excited to influence you with their opinion on questions that they have not yet heard. They have a pre-planned one-minute opening statement. I'll introduce them, and then they will have questions provided by the Poway Chamber of Commerce and the Green Valley Civic Association, then we will have a few questions from the field. If you have a question specifically for Poway City Council candidates from Districts 1 and 3, you should write them down, and if you need a form to write them with, please go back to the back table and get one and have those ready, and we will collect those after the first or second question. I'd like to introduce to you the candidates for Poway City Council District 1: John Carson, Dave Grush, Peter Neill, and John Ryan. And one of the candidates that are here for Poway City Council District 3: John Mullin. I want to thank all of you for your time and your opportunity and your dedication to serving our community, and we would like to start with opening statements. And I don't have the sequence.
It's in order they're seated.
In the order that you're seated, thank you very much. John Carson, the mic is yours.
Hello, everybody, thank you for coming. As a representative on city council, I hope to provide fresh ideas and new leadership. I wish to serve as an independent representative for District 1 and all of Poway. My primary goals are to enhance community services for the people and to provide better civic oversight of the commercial improvements along Poway Road. The city, together with private organizations, has done well in establishing community events such as Poway Days and the Poway Rodeo, but additional funding should be invested in these community events. Although Poway Road Corridor Specific Plan has good intentions to revitalize Poway, the density, park requirements, and traffic flow need further improvement. I support attracting new tax-paying businesses and supporting local employers here in Poway. I also hope to increase city operations by making it easier for individuals and businesses to work with the city of Poway. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran, disabled as well, and I've lived in Poway for seven years, and specifically in District 1, thank you.
Thank you, Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Good evening. Maintaining our quality of life in Poway is why I am running for reelection. Let me remind you why we all live here. We have Poway Lake, the Blue Sky Preserve. Old Poway Park has a railroad, farmer's market, and the Veterans Park. We also have the Winter Fest, Halloween, and the Christmas events. We are acquiring more open space that will preserve forever. Just last night, we purchased 40 acres. We have a great library. We are building a new community center and a swimming pool. We are making improvements along Poway Road, or Espola Road. We approved the Poway Road Specific Plan that will generate revenues for our city. We are the safest city in the county, and let's not forget the hundreds of volunteers in our city. Oh, and by the way, we have a balanced budget with $22 million in reserve. These are just a few reasons why we live here, why people want to move here, and actually why people are retiring here, thank you.
Thank you, Peter Neill, the mic is yours.
Evening, thanks for hanging in there. My name's Peter Neill, and I'm running for District 1. I moved to Poway in 1980, just before it became a city, and that's why I moved to Poway, because it was becoming an independent city and not being controlled by San Diego, or so we hope. Wendy and I moved into a rental on Hill Country Drive, District 4 now. Then finally, after a number of years of saving nickels and dimes, I was able to purchase one acre of land on Golden Way, down the other end, in District 4. So, I spent a lot of time in District 4, and I had my troubles trying to get my acre of property out there on the east end of Poway in District 4. So, I moved to the Palisades, I'm on Candy Cane Lane, ground zero, come see us at Christmas.
John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Thank you, I'm John Ryan, a candidate for District 1 Council. I've been a Heritage Hills resident since 2002, longtime active in the community through both charity work and participation in resolving issues. I'm running because I'm upset with the ongoing problems at City Hall, both financial and ethical, and I believe I have the skill set to fix those problems. I watched in the last several years, as management of Poway has had significant errors costing us millions and the decline of our assets, including the parks, due to the lack of maintenance. I believe we are screwing up, losing money, and not fixing our problems. I watched the Poway Corridor Plan and hoped it would address the issues we all have with the look of Poway Road. Unfortunately, what came out was several thousand more homes, increased density of homes with less parking, no change for traffic except bike lanes. This would change the character of Poway for years to come as we are already living with the mistakes of the past. For these reasons and because I believe we need to restore ethics and transparency to City Hall.
Thank you very much.
I'm running for District 1 Representative, thank you.
John Mullin, the microphone is yours.
Thank you very much, I'm John Mullin, I'm currently deputy mayor of the city of Poway. That's my night job, my day job, I'm a painting contractor, I've been in the construction industry for some time, and it will come out in the early meetings and maybe in the future. Some of that background turns out to be beneficial as we look at the plans that are in place for Poway Road. In addition to those jobs I serve as a Poway representative with Metro Wishwater JBA, I chart the finance committee for the Metro Wishwater JBA, also certain in the Metro Transit System, and have a history of volunteer activities before I got into office. I'm running because, yes, we are facing some challenges, but unlike what you'll hear from these guys and what you've heard before, these are not challenges that we were unprepared for. We have put plans in place to address the challenges that we see, whether it be pensions or whether it be housing, and I want to see those plans through fruition. And I'm doing, and so Poway did very well in the city, and I want to keep it that way, and hopefully convince you, boy, I can help you there, thank you.
Thank you. Now onto question 1, and the response, the sequence is provided to each of the candidates. They will be passing the microphone in front of them. Their time will start when I announce their name and say they have the mic. Question 1: The city recently adopted the Poway Road Corridor Specific Plan Amendment for the purpose of revitalizing public and private properties and for the creating of a town center. As a city council member, you will be voting on specific proposed developments. Here is your question. What are your criteria in evaluating such proposed developments? Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Actually, we've had two meetings on developments. There was one back in March, it was called the Fairfield Apartments. Someone came in and said, "If we bought the bowling alley and the, and the, I'm sorry, the strip shops, here's what we want to do," and they said it was going to be a mixed use. It was far from a mixed use, it was 250 apartments, not enough parking, not enough open space. I think the council, to my belief, all voted four, or five to zero, that this was not the way to go. On the other hand, we had another development called the Outpost. They were going to provide parking for about 350 people, 54 units, 40,000 square feet. We met with them a few times, we asked for changes, they made those changes, and for future developments, we will go through the same process.
Thank you very much.
Case by case.
Peter Neill, the mic is yours.
The issue at hand since I moved to Poway, it's the road that runs through the center of town. What's happened, though, over the years is these plans come and go, and Poway Road still gets built, but now we've reached a period where there are deserted, abandoned buildings on both sides of Poway Road, more on the south side than there's on the north side. I believe in the Poway Road Specific Plan, but I want to remove the word "specific" because it outlines a specific goal. I'd like to replace it with the word "guide" and work towards the redevelopment of Poway, but my emphasis with the new district representation is to listen to the people of District 1, District 4, District 3, and what they want to see done with Poway Road.
Thank you, John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Thank you, so I read through everything in the corridor plan and was disappointed by the increases in density. The problem I have with that, I'm a real estate broker by trade, so you are exposed to lots of different properties around the county and how to do development. If you look at the corridor plan, the increases in density, the possible increases, are up to 35 units per acre, or DU's. If anybody drives the 15 and knows Mir Mesa Boulevard, off to your right is called Casimir View, Casamasa View, something like that, that huge complex. That is 30 units per acre, so that is what we are looking at if we go to 35 units per acre, and I'm against that kind of development. I think we need to be very careful about how we develop Poway Road and make sure that we retain Poway's character, thank you.
Thank you, John Carson, the mic is yours.
Criteria in evaluating specific developments along Poway Road. First and foremost, we need to protect the interest of the people who currently live along the Poway Road corridor. I live 200 steps from Poway Road, on Dakota Drive, just a street over from Terrace Camp. What that means to me is we ensure that the density is correct, the parking meets or exceeds conservative estimates of what we all believe to be needed for a major development in any city. Poway Road does need revitalization. What it needs to be is thoughtful, well-planned in the community, not just by the council members. We're not emperors without clothes, and it needs to be thoughtful for what Poway really needs. Thank you.
Thank you, John Mullin, the mic is yours.
All right, let's be clear about this, we are the city and the country, what we're talking about is the city part, okay, this is Poway Road. From the time I moved here in 1976, the question has been on the table, what are we going to do with Poway Road? This council, I am proud to say, is answering that question. The criteria now, the question on the table, though, is what is the criteria for evaluating projects? To get to the densities that has been cited on this, they have to provide some benefit. That is where the, that is where the community input and the council's input comes into play. If you want to get that kind of a density, you need to make an offer for something. Whether that offer be some sort of public space, public walkway, it is up to the developer to be creative and come to us with a plan that provides amenities that are suitable in the marketplace, presents a project that he thinks he can present, that he can finance and get done, and that we agree. As Dave said, we've got a couple, what are called workshops, to come forward with ideas, and I will say that the developer who came forward was Fairfield, and they just dropped their option because they didn't like the answer they heard. So, the people that are concerned about the project, don't give this council any input, enough credit.
Thank you very much. I didn't forget anybody. Question 2: In light of the recent no vote on a proposed Twin Peaks Road Landscape Maintenance District Assessment, what do you, I need to preface to let all the candidates know that there is no introduction, this is your question. In light of the recent no vote on the proposed Twin Peaks Road Landscape Maintenance District Assessment, what do you suggest be done to provide sufficient funding and maintenance along this corridor beyond the city's recent short-term supplemental funding? Peter, Neill?
That's, the Landscape Maintenance District along Twin Peaks hits very close to home. It's District 1's border with District 3 on the far side. I was hit with that during this last year, and I think all of the neighbors that I talked to, it was 66 to 33 against that Landscape Maintenance District tax increase. So, it's clear that the people don't want to pay that additional money. But what can happen is make it a more universal Landscape Maintenance District. We can probably, and I'm going to count on the mayor to take the lead on this. I'm just going to be providing input from the District 1 point of view, working with District 3, where Twin Peaks is shared.
Thank you, John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Thank you, so, again, going back to real estate, LMDs, Landscape Maintenance Districts, are a very strange thing. You have what's essentially an HOA, the local neighborhoods get the benefit, but they're built into the city, and the city has to ultimately be responsible for the cost, so it's on your title, you have to pay a tax for it. So, to increase that tax, you have to go through a vote. It's very complex, it's not something that now, future city developments are doing because of all the issues they're running into at this state. As to how to fix the current problem, when you look at the one that was up for vote, I believe the deficit was about $200,000 then, a little bit. We spent a lot of money doing a vote and a study, and the costs that I got for that were around $300, so, $300,000, so we need to find a better way than that, thank you.
Thank you, John Carson, the mic is yours.
City landscaping districts, the LMD specifically, increase the value of all homes along that corridor, that we can all agree. Without those trees and just dirt along those roads, those homes wouldn't be as attractive. That being said, the tax base for those homes rises because of the value incurred or added to by the beautiful trees along, you know, Espola and Twin Peaks Road. It behooves the city to take the LMD money, put it back into those landscape areas, and also fill in any gaps that the LMDs have, because that rises the tax base when homes resell, the tax base goes up when those homes are resold, and it just helps everybody. Rising tides raise all ships, thank you.
Thank you, John Mullin, the mic is yours.
Yes, LMDs are enhanced in landscaping and actually installed by the developer of the project, and he is the one that agrees to form the LMD and does so on behalf of all of the lots in his project. They do that because they want to enhance the landscaping beyond what the city would do if we were doing it. So, that's the rationale for having that charge paid by the owner's net project, and all of them agreed to that, whether or not they realized it or not, when they purchased. The problem we had with, in this case, is that that all happened pre Prop 218, and the council could have raised the assessment anytime to cover increasing costs. Into Prop 218, we can no longer do that, and our only option to address rising costs was to go through a vote, which is what we did. A lot of complications, a lot of nuances to that, that were kind of difficult to follow and people didn't understand. Where we are now is we have a citizens committee looking to explore different options, different ideas that may not have come up during that first process. I'm optimistic and hopeful that we'll come up with some things, and if not, then, yeah, we're back to the drumboards, but there's not an easy answer to it.
Thank you very much, Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Thank you. The residents spoke loud and clear in both LMDs, I think one lost 56 to 46, and the other one was 61 to 39. Let's see, I worry a lot about this. I worry about our streets, what they're going to look like. I worry about the danger to our residents of trees falling down, and it's happening as we speak. And I worry about where the money is going to come from. At present, there is no money in our general fund for this, but we are working the problem. We spent about 260K, 65K in management reserve. I think that's the first time we've ever spent management reserve to work the issue, the interim issue, until the budget in June. And as John said, we did approve a formation of the committee, and there's about 12 members, I think, and I plan to attend that, because I live right off of Twin Peaks. I know the dire need that it has. We don't have much time, and the council has a big decision to make. Like I said, I don't think we're going to be able to pass a tax, so we got to figure out what we have to do, and we've got, you know, a city without trees.
Before we get into questions.
Excuse me, I ended 15 seconds short, and I'd just like to recognize Dave was out cleaning Twin Peaks sidewalks a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you very much.
That's not his job.
That's not in our budget, Peter. So, what I'd like to do is let the audience know if you have questions that you'd like to have brought up, write them down on the pad, raise them to your hands, and we could have someone come around and pick them up at this time. We're going to go straight into question 3. There have been, and the, here's the background, and then you'll have the question. The background is that there have been a number of significant issues with budgets, deadlines, quality of work, and management of major projects in Poway recently, from the new pedestrian path on Espola Road to the Poway Swim Center. Here's your question. How should council address accountability, and what best practices would you recommend to avoid problems in the future? John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Sounds familiar. I have, I spoke against the appointment of Tina White as the city manager three years ago because she has a long history with the city of Poway, she's been involved in lots of issues, and we have continued to see problems with the management of Poway, preventable errors and loss of money that really has no excuse. So, one of the reasons that I am so passionate about this is because I believe that we can fix those errors. I don't see any output from the council when we've asked these questions on how we're fixing these areas, what we're going to do in the future to prevent them, even going back to the billing issue from a couple of years ago. How did we fix that, how are we preventing it in the future? We don't get the answer to those questions, and that's very frustrating. That's something that if I were a council member, I would want to engage the public and tell them, here's the problem, here's how we're fixing it, in all cases, thank you.
Thank you. John Carson, the mic is yours.
Accountability, department by department is very important, tax dollars are very important. I expect the taxpayers to hold the city staff and council very accountable for mismanagement, inefficient management, cost overruns, what have you. What would also help this would be avoiding crossing money streams, i.e., water and sewage funds going to pay for city staff salaries, sorry, the word escaped me for a second. Keeping an accountability, department by department, specific taxes come in for specific things, we need to make sure those streams don't get crossed. Really, the department should be accountable, and the city staff, the city management, and the council should hold those people accountable, thank you.
Thank you, John Mullin, the mic is yours.
I reject the premise of the question in that either of those two projects were mismanaged. Espola Road, our budget for that project is $5.1 million. Even after the change order was issued, we have currently committed to spend $4.2 million. Espola Road, as we speak today, is $900,000 under budget. It is true, there was a flaw in the plans, but that only meant that our initial budget, or, excuse me, our initial bids were too low to begin with. We all looked at them and knew they were too low, all seven came in the same. Again, the project, as we speak today, $900,000 under budget. The pool project was, we had inferior concrete decking on the deck, and city staff correctly saw it, rejected it, required that the contract be removed and replaced. The difference being, if we had accepted that, for the sake of one summer's worth of swimming, we would have had to deal with inferior work for the next 30 years. I commend staff for having caught that, fixed it, and again, we'll say it was not a failure on our part, it was just that was best the way construction works.
Thank you, Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Thank you. First of all, I would say that the city manager is doing a great job. On the construction, I don't know of any construction project, private or public, that ever went smoothly from day one to the end of the day. In both of these cases, when we found out, we fixed a problem, and you know how we found out? Our staff was on site, they found it before it got to be a bad problem. And accountability, you know, we might get a phone call from Tina White at 3 o'clock in the morning telling us what's going on. We know what's going on, we have meetings with her every single week, and we were told about what actions are being taken. But, but these things are being fixed, and the pool is doing well, this poller project is doing well. Thank you.
Peter Neill, the mic is yours.
Thank you. I spent, in six-year timeframe, I rode 10 different submarines with 10 different crews. You go to sea with the stores you have and the crews that are on that boat. We did the missions very successfully, regardless of what the staff was like, regardless of what the stores were like, we accomplished the mission. If I run for city council, as I am, and I'm elected to city council, I will work with the people I have to to get the mission done, and who for? The crew, and the people that crew serve, and that's the people of the city of Poway. And that's what district representation means. I am going to be the representative for District 1, and I will keep the people informed of what's going on.
Thank you. On to question 4. According to the city's 2018-19 budget, total revenues are projected to be $48.5 million, while expenditures are projected at $48.1 million, which is a very tight margin. Historically, public safety costs for fire and safety comprise over 50% of the budget and have continued to increase at a higher rate than revenues. Here is your question. As we face a potential structural deficit problem in the future, what would be your approach to meeting public safety needs in a fiscally responsible manner while balancing public benefit? John Mullin, the mic is yours.
Yes, part of the reason I'm running for reelection is I believe we have plans in place to do just that. I concur with others that have said that public safety is the number one priority. It is the reason we exist in the city, the number one reason we exist, the reason that is on mission. The plan we have in place, you only have two choices when you face the problem at this. You can try to increase revenues, you can try to reduce expenses. We are doing both. The increase in revenues has to do with the Poway Road Specific Plan, the revitalization of the economy that's going to occur, the reinvestment by properties adjacent to the plan that will be driven by economic activity caused by the plan. We're also trying to reduce expenses, actually are reducing expenses, actually in two solar projects, one's completed at Poway High, the other will be coming up soon at Fire Station 3 on Maroto, to provide savings on the expense side. There are two ways to do it, increase revenue, decrease expenses. We are working on both as we speak.
Thank you very much, John Carson, the mic is yours.
Public safety is what I do for a living. I work for a communications company that provides communications assets to public safety entities, police departments, fire departments, cities, counties, states, DOD, DOE, all the above. I understand the burdens of the economic cost for the officer on the street, for the firefighter at Cal Fire, for the firefighters here in Poway. The people that provide our public safety are nearly untouchable. I heard the word untouchable earlier. The reason I say that is we should always be prepared to negotiate better rates for our citizens. Efficiency, true efficiencies in public safety come from the equipment and the things that the firefighters use on a daily basis. Don't waste, maintain, it's cheaper to maintain than buy new. Just make sure we protect the assets that we have, and make sure the people are equipped the right way, and things will be done cheaper, thank you.
Thank you, Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Let's see, it sounds like a broken record, but safety is number one. Safety is about 50 to 60% of our general fund. And in the past years, I think the sheriffs, we elected not to hire an extra detective, so we are working the problem. For the fire department, we have, over the years, reduced, or have asked them to increase their contribution in the pension. As John mentioned, we've had solar projects that's going to help us. In some cases, technology has helped to reduce costs, but it's going to be a challenge. Maintaining our services, our services at a good level, and still maintaining the safety, sheriffs, and the fire department is going to be a challenge. Next year, we will be negotiating the fire department contract, so we are aware of it, we're all working it, and I think we'll be okay.
Thank you, Peter Neill, the mic is yours.
There's always a balance between the cost of getting the city run and the amount of money that's available to run the city. That's not going to go away. In 1980, there were 10,000 people approximately in Poway. By 1996, that had grown to the 47,000 number, where we have sort of oscillated from 47,000, and I guess the projections are now at 50,000. So, that means from 1996 to now, the city grew by 3,000. If we invoke the Poway Road Specific Plan, specific to the limits installed there, that's another 3,000 people, which is a hockey stick on the population growth curve. So, we have to pay attention to the budget right now and keep the slow growth of our population the way it is.
Thank you, John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Thank you, so, before I was in real estate, I was in quality assurance, quality control for years, and I was heavily involved in statistics, and the statistics we hear on safety are very interesting. Murders are down, several other things are down, petty crime is way up. I live in South Poway, District 1. When you walk around South Poway as a candidate, you find out there's been a ton of car break-ins. There's been a ton of other petty crimes, including breaking into houses. I have been the victim of a crime five times in three years, not counting political crime. So, it's a big deal, it's a big deal, and in this situation, I feel the council is not responsive. I have brought this before them, other members have brought this before, and people have emailed them. If we're spending 50, 55% of our revenue on this, we need to solve these problems. I had not been a victim of these crimes for 18 years, I have been the last couple, thank you.
Thank you, John Mullin, the mic is yours. Did I miss that question?
Yeah, we're done.
I'll answer again.
Perfect. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, that's not.
Mark, it's up to you.
Hey, I'll tell you, I think that senior senator's got over the sink. Here's, we have one question from the audience, and it is regarding the veterans' housing project that was not approved, and here's the question, as it has been written. Since the veterans' housing plan on Twin Peaks Road was mixed, what ideas do you have for that lot? And we have this question, and the sequence will be as presented in front of you. John Carson, the mic is yours.
Why not revisit a veteran housing project? We had it before, it was on the table, we can reevaluate it. I don't think... I don't think there's any problem with it. We're helping the, the project on Pomerato and where the Ford dealership keeps their cars with the special needs housing, right? So why can't we do a little bit to help the vets, right? I'm a, I'm a disabled veteran myself, Dave's a veteran, Mark's a veteran, there, there's many veterans in the crowd. Peter's a Navy sub-vet, right? There's many vets that choose to live in Poway because it's a fantastic, fantastic place to live. Nothing's off the table for that property, as far as I'm concerned. It's the right thing to do for our vets. They served us, the people that came before me served me, they served, they came before Dave and served him. Nothing truly is off the table, and, and I'll do whatever it takes to get something done like that for Poway.
Thank you. Grush, the mic is yours.
Thank you. I don't disagree. It's still under the housing authority, and what it takes is, we have the land, but it takes a developer with money. And we also have other, other affordable housings in Montevista, or possibly along Old Pomerato Road next to the VFW. So we, I think we listen to everybody. After we voted down the Habitat for Humanity, we actually had an inquiry about Montevista Road, and I think the mayor went there and took them to look at it. It didn't work out, they didn't like it, but we were looking, and, and we will continue to look. But we need, we have the land, we just don't have the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Neal, the mic is yours.
Oh, boy, I'm right between Dave and John on this one, and I can only hope that John can address this. Mr. Mullen, this is District Three. The input I'm getting from my cruising through District One and talking to the people is the same question was just asked. What are you going to do about veterans' housing? Why, what happened to Twin Peaks? So the interest is there from the people that I'm talking to, and that's all I can say on that particular matter at this point. The mic.
Thank you. John Ryan, the mic is yours.
So I'm passionate about this issue because of how everything developed last time. Basically, we had several votes going along. The veterans' housing became a hot potato, and three of the council members switched their vote. The problem that I have is, after all that political firestorm was created, we heard multiple council people, including the mayor, say, I have a plan, we're going to do this. It's two years later, and we see none of those plans, and I attended all the meetings and/or watched them on video. Hasn't been an agenda item or anything else. So this is about trust, and are people going to follow through with what they say, or are they giving you a promise that they're not going to follow through with? That's just a, a big issue for me because so many people are upset that that project did not go through. Thank you.
Thank you. John Mullen, the mic is yours.
Yeah, I was on the wrong side of the three-two vote on the veterans' housing project, and I, and, and I still lament the fact that we were not able to make that happen. But that's water under, under the bridge. It is a housing authority site, owned by the housing authority. It will one day be a housing site. What it takes to get there, as I've been crawling up the ladder tonight, and even after answering this question, is a little complex. Just because we have the land doesn't mean we can necessarily make it happen. As I say, it is a housing site, I will say. Possible in consideration for a temporary home for the seniors for their transition plan. It is, has not been rejected, that that would be a possible site for a local building. But again, that is only because if they are empty and available, has that come up. As for now, it's a housing site, it will one day be a housing project, and I just hope it is done as nicely as what veterans' housing would have been.
Thank you. That concludes all of our, our questions, and we will move into closing statements. Each of our candidates have prepared in advance a sixty-second, one-minute closing statement, and we will go in the following order. Dave Grush, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mike. First, I want to thank the chamber and the GBCA for putting this together. I really appreciate that. And thanks to Mark, and, you know, Mark, we're still waiting for the next softball game. You've been dodging us. Let's see, first of all, I am, I'm really proud of what we have done to make Poway a better place. We've started three projects that have been on the back burner for many years, the Espola Road project, the community senior center, and the Poway Improvement Project. This council made a decision, and we're moving forward. I'm proud that we have a balanced budget with about twenty-two million dollars of reserve. I think we are the envy of most cities in our county. I'm proud that I'm known as the most accessible and approachable council member, and I will continue to do that in the next four years. Finally, I'd just like to make a question or a comment that there wasn't a change of vote on the, on the veterans. That was, that three-two was the way it was always in the beginning and the end, and I didn't change my vote.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for being here.
Peter Neal?
I'm going to start off with that. Thanks for being here, hanging in there. It's been a long evening, at least mine started about five-thirty because I got the time all wrong. But I'd like to close with, this is a unique circumstance for me. This is my first run for Poway City Council, even though I've been here, I unfortunately had to work for a living for a goodly number of years, but I now have the time over there to dedicate to running for city council. This has been a great city. All three kids grew up through the Poway Unified School District. They're all well on their way. Unfortunately, they can't afford to live in Poway. So it's my time to pay back to this community what I owe it, and that would be listening to my neighbors talk. Thank you.
Thank you. John Ryan, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Just going back to the veterans' thing, if you look at the record, I believe there's five votes, four, and then the final vote, yes. Mullen was consistent, I applaud him for that. As I look back the last eight years in Poway, I find not much better and a whole lot is worse. The incumbents have all voted for more homes, more density, more traffic, less services, with more cost, with million-dollar errors and timelines blown. Our parks and fields are degrading significantly. We have seen what the future holds for Poway with the current members. I believe there is a better way. We need a change in Poway and to move Poway forward. I want to clean up Poway Road while not creating a traffic burden or changing our community so that we become Mira Mesa. I believe we can make our city better, and I'm running to do just that. You are available to contact me directly via my cell phone or find out more where I stand on the issues by going to ryanforpoway.com. Thank you very much for attending this forum. I know it took a lot of your time, and I hope you see that we need a change. Thank you.
Thank you. John Carson, the mic is yours.
John Carson, the mic is yours. Yes, sir, I understand. First of all, I really want to reiterate what everybody said, is, thank you for coming out. I know it's late already. My son, nine years old, is still back here playing on his mom's phone. Hang in there. Thank you, Jack. None of the people that you guys have seen tonight are bad choices. Everybody loves what we're doing, what we're running for. I, I truly believe that everybody involved has a heart for the people of Poway. I just want to follow up my whole night with my, my commitments to the people of Poway. I plan to create an environment of welcoming and listening within the city government. I plan to improve upon public safety matters within Poway. I want to improve upon the parks we already have and look for opportunities to expand our parks where we are impacted the most. I stand behind my commitment to be accountable to the people of Poway, and I will always strive to be an active participant in the great community of Poway. I love it here, you guys love it here. I want to raise my son in, in many of the same fashions that you guys raise your children, and thank you guys for coming again.
Thank you. John Mullen, the mic is yours.
Thank you. You know, I originally ran for office because I wanted to apply business principles to the management of our city. And if we looked at our city today and looked at what its mission would be, it would be pretty clear to me, anyway, we want to provide exceptional public safety, we've all said that, and it's true. Law enforcement, fire protection, as good as it can be. We want to maintain our infrastructure, that has to do with not only streets, but stormwater stewards, city buildings, parks, water and sewer service. We want to maintain the family-friendly atmosphere and neighborhood that we all enjoy and the reason we moved here, and we need to do this all within our means. Poway leadership has, in the past and currently does, an exceptional job of maintaining our focus on that mission. It's a critical difference between us and other cities, and I'm committed to maintaining that focus. As we talked, I talked about early during the campaign, we'll be hearing complaints that we're not doing a good job. But nobody's going to complain that our city is too safe, our roads are too smooth, that we have too many community events, or that our budget is too balanced.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates for Poway City Council in Districts One and Three, and for all the candidates who participated in the fourth.